It was, it was good.
Well, that's it.
It's not like a real public meeting, is it?
It's open.
We've never, we've never kept that formality. All yours I've done is outfit.
That's all right.
Don't know that the live video stream is going to work this evening.
Oh dear.
So I will.
Oh dear.
I'll take my next slide.
I'm like she, I don't understand you.
Yeah, microphone's right there.
Was that, was it not? Do you need Tom?
Did you hear my?
Tom Burdow is our secretary. Do you need him to take me up a minute or you?
I'll take minutes, so you.
I'm sorry.
To meet the budget.
Oh, I said, yeah.
Shocked, so I told him.
I know it's you a long time.
Okay, well, yeah, why change that one?
Yeah, I would do it.
It's not like, is it?
Yeah, it is.
Already?
No, we didn't.
No, same here, sir.
I'm letting the outside powers that be know that it's not streaming correctly, but.
Andy, maybe you sing to it, it'll work.
Not the way I sing.
Are these normal, are the ABCs taped?
Yeah.
Typically, we do it, there's not really any viewership, but people like it.
Oh, you don't put it on the website? I mean, I'm.
It is there.
It is.
But it's good for the minute takers to be able to look at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we just speak, smile.
Only our, our head is back to. We make all the faces.
Do you have a paper version of the budgets for tonight, John?
You mean the, the overall one?
Uh, nope, we're presenting tonight.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't print them out. Is this enough, is this just one copy?
Uh, I have multiple copies.
Okay.
That's one for everyone that's here. And do you want a paper copy, John? Or do I?
I think I got them all, but.
Sorry.
I figured people bring them, so I don't bother printing them out. I've got the.
Nobody told me they wanted a projector tonight. I'm assuming you guys didn't bring audio visual that you want to project?
No.
Yeah, the people that are coming tonight, I don't think anybody would have an in-depth.
Well, I guess if they do, they won't be showing it, right?
Well, I have a spare laptop hidden in the other room. Pressing service.
Oh, I could've brought one.
It takes a while, but.
I don't think the two fifty is presenting. I think that's what. I think that's what I heard from Scott last time.
Yeah, I think we moved them to the twenty eighth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Must be Amber.
Amanda.
Amanda, I'm sorry. I'm Andy, the time is.
And the swab down here.
Put your name wrong.
Don't forgive me this time, it's next time.
Yeah, yes.
Right.
Somebody, I can't forget, can't remember their names, so I won't get it wrong, but tell me that you have fabulous Halloween decorations at your home.
I do, thank you.
He's got some paper copies.
I do.
Andy's got some paper copies.
You did, I'm worried tonight.
I think Rebecca is the only one who's horrifically offended by.
And she lives on the computer, doesn't she? No, I don't want paper. I need to see, I want paper.
She had the tactile experience.
Yes, the tactile, you can write on it.
Hey, Joe.
There was, not just a store, burn in the wood stove.
I was gonna say, Sam, for the wood stove, because there's no newspapers anymore. This is the schedule as of right now, John, but I'm.
It will probably change.
Yeah, I'm gonna suggest a change this evening.
Thank you.
I didn't hear from anybody who's not coming, so I'm assuming you're just.
I'm on there for.
Rebecca, Tom. Stop them to try to influence.
I'll take about two. Probably take two.
I don't think they'll complain.
No, I don't think so.
Are you gonna warn the cleaning people about your decorations?
My decorations? Oh, Linda, I'm on my timer.
They walk into.
Yeah, Linda, I'm on my timer.
I'll be standing there or turn around or something and I go, oh, does someone here? Oh, no, there's not.
She did that like three times in a half hour.
Well, the, the child skeleton was the one that caught me.
Making sure I'm keeping you on your toes, but.
I was gonna ask him how long they've been sitting there, but it was pretty obvious. Shannon's.
Oh, did you see him in the video? I bet he saw him sitting in it.
Oh, they're constantly sitting there.
Sorry.
So we have a tire delivery downstairs. Anybody owning up to it? No?
What?
Tire.
I don't know, but they look pretty good in my trailer that.
Yeah.
Do you want a hard copy, Scott?
Oh.
The budgets?
Uh, no, I brought some.
Thank you. I'm gonna save one copy for Tom, because he usually wants a copy, but I have a. One spare copy if the audience wants to share. Something they're reviewing tonight. One item, just sort of housekeeping, that I'll bring up. Uh, Mr. Bullock has booked himself into a two-day conference over the time that he is scheduled to present, and he can come back for the meeting if it's too big an inconvenience to move him. But it's a two-day conference in downtown Boston, so.
That doesn't make any sense, does it?
The Ross lady, she's in charge.
Who's in charge?
Hmm?
Kinda is.
I am. Let's see. We don't wanna put in the next week. Because we don't know. Do we know how many social service agencies we're working with?
I think we've got four or five at least that are confirmed. Um, I know you've got an hour scheduled for my presentation, which doesn't usually take that long. The twenty eighth might get optioned.
How long does he, I never know how long he.
I would say he typically goes, you know, a good twenty minutes or so.
Why don't we put him on locally here? The twenty eighth.
Maybe have the library on it.
I know.
The library is usually fairly packaged and.
You made it before the meeting started.
Sit with me.
Two minutes to square.
I am looking at you, ma'am.
I don't know what else we can do.
If it's, if, if the group doesn't feel it's.
The twenty one, the twenty first isn't an option for social services, so.
Well, it depends, because most of them don't come, so.
What'd you say, he's already got four?
It's not that many. Who is it?
I don't remember exactly which one.
Because we dipped him down to an hour and fifty minutes.
You think it would make more sense to go on the twenty first?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's got almost everything. He's got way too many budgets, so.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. And you'll tell Denise we're changing the schedule again?
Again.
Sure, I'll appreciate it.
Our kids.
I'll put the budgets.
I say.
Andy? Yes, yes, have a copy.
Thank you.
The recording is working, yes. It actually works live, so don't say anything too audacious.
It's seven o'clock in the beautiful town of Leanne, New Hampshire. It's September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and I have a meeting, and then I transfer to Pat.
Evening, everyone. We have a full list of everybody here tonight, the first presenters. Uh, so town clerk, tax collector, Shannon. And Linda.
I thought I'd come along here.
Oh, you're gonna make the presentation? Okay. First of all, does everybody know everybody?
Probably not.
Okay, uh, I'm Pat Barber, I'm the chair of the budget committee.
Good job, Sam. ABC member.
Number, our ABC member.
Got the ABC member and select person.
Sure, there's the chair, select person.
I don't like to flaunt my titles.
Pick one and stick to it.
Rebecca Hawthorne, select person.
John McCrossell.
Select person.
And I'll place your, I'll flaunt all their titles for them. Are you able to elect your ABC?
Uh, Andy Robertson, town district or person.
There's too much giggling, I'm sorry. Shana Brown, uh, town clerk, tax collector.
And Linda Reinhold, deputy, town clerk, tax collector.
Welcome, ladies.
Okay, so, um, pretty much our, our budget, I think, is fairly straightforward. I, um, starting with the elections, uh, this, it's higher. It's fiscal year twenty-seven, because we have three elections and one deliberative. So, um, moderator gets two hundred dollars per, so that's why I guess it's eight hundred. And that's why most of the other, uh, working people, the assistant supervisors, budget, uh, budget, um, ballot clerks, excuse me, um, all are a little bit higher, because obviously there's more elections. The printing is, includes, um, the printing of the town, uh, the town ballots, the coding for the, um, the ballot machine. And then this year, as of, um, January, the state has said that the towns now have to use the one-for-all accessible voting booth for town meetings, which means they have, the accessible, um, voting, uh, is for people who can use the tablet to vote, or there's also headphones that they can listen and fill in the dots, and then it prints out their ballot for them. And so now that we have to use them in town meetings as well, uh, we also have to, um, pay six hundred dollars per election to, um, to make it available, uh, for the, um, for the voters. So that, that's why this is, well, actually, it's not as much as fiscal year twenty-five, but that's included in this, so that was one of the things that I added in. Um, everything, the other training, mileage, postage, meals. The equipment, last year when I was here, I put in, or we put in the ten thousand, because the, um, voting machine that we use is now becoming obsolete, and, um, the state says that we have to either purchase, there's, there's two different ones that we can purchase. Um, Dawn, um, the, uh, the moderator and assistant moderator, Karen Long, are looking into which machine they want to purchase. I'm thinking, I, I haven't heard back from Dawn, but I'm thinking they're probably gonna buy, uh, purchase the, in this budget year, um, ending next, yeah, next June. So it, it'll probably be purchased in this budget year. However, if they don't actually do that, then I did put it into the twenty-seven budget, just in case it doesn't get happen, happen this budget season. Um, so I figured before you finalize, I should have an answer as to whether that will leave the ten thousand in or.
Because it's the same number.
It's the same number, yes. Yeah, so hopefully by the time you, before you finalize, um, we'll have a definite answer as to whether it'll be this, this one or the next one. Um, then with the, um, town clerk, tax collector, we've hoped to hire someone to become deputy. Um, we did have someone hired this year for a month or two, didn't work out. So now it's just Shannon, and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I should've prefaced this. Um, Shannon's been here since, you know, the end of March, and in a training process. Um, and I'm still here, because I am training her. Uh, we definitely wanna make sure she's up to speed before I walk out the door. Um, and when I looked back, um, when Liz first came on board, um, I made her deputy after about nine months, and actually, when I came on board, um, I looked and Penny, some of you may not know Penny, but Penny did stay, um, I, I started in November, and she did stay until the following June. It's, it, there's a lot to learn, and since Penny's left, the, the state has put a lot more onto the town clerk, um, as far as what we can do with motor vehicles and all that. And, um, also, the elections have just exploded into all the laws that, you know, there's more and more and more laws. Um, so it's a very detailed, intricate, um, job that sometimes people, I think, don't quite realize it's not just registering vehicles. And even if it was just registering vehicles, a lot of times, there's, I, I mean, since I've been back, I've seen two, two or three instances that I had never seen in my twenty years. So it's just, it's constantly changing, and, and so, so anyway, that's why I'm still here. I don't know whether you were questioning, might be questioning why I'm still here.
So, so Linda, can I ask a question about that? So she, she started in March, she started in March, sorry, I'm referring to the third person. And then you're thinking nine months, so are you aiming to be done in December? Because that's fiscal year twenty-six, so I.
Correct.
I guess my question is, what's the plan for fiscal year twenty-seven?
Correct.
Okay.
The plan is to find somebody, um, that we can train as the deputy, and hence, hoping that in twenty-seven, we have the deputy, that would be the deputy's salary. Um, if it takes a while to hire the deputy, which, like I said, we hired someone, didn't work out, so now we're, it, it's, it's difficult to find someone, it's a part-time job, um, pays about twenty, between twenty-three and twenty-five dollars an hour, about twenty-eight, twenty-nine hours a week, um, and the person has to live in Lee. So I think that may be one of the issues, is that the, the, of the four thousand plus in Lee, they don't want the job. Other alternative would be to look elsewhere. That person could not be the deputy, because the deputy has to live in Lee, but they could be the assistant, and I, I, I would, I would be willing to stay on and as deputy, um, and then only, only be paid when, whenever I actually physically came to work. Um, so our plan is to find somebody, even if we find somebody by December, that person is not gonna be ready, you know, at the end of fiscal year. I don't, I, unless it's really an exceptional person, um, no offense.
When I, when I was brought on, it took two months in order for me to get the approvals to do things online.
Yeah.
So if we were to hire someone, let's say by December, there's still gonna be February before they could, or March before they could even physically do something.
So the plan is, if we do find somebody, um, then that person would eventually become the deputy, and that's why I put the assistant wages in there, um, so that I would continue, well, at the time, I wouldn't be a deputy, I would be the deputy, and maybe the assistant, but we would have two people in the office. I'd be training, and then, once that person was up and trained, then I would step away.
So you're thinking you should, that you're gonna train the deputy for nine months after we find someone?
Well, I would more say maybe get them the basics, maybe five, four, five, well, five months, because then by that time, Shannon should be up and running, so the person, the person can work on their own, but they do have questions, um, during their transactions, so she could be working on a transaction, but the other person, if they had a question, she could answer it. But if, if we hired somebody, well, what we did was we hired somebody, and at this very moment, or that very moment, Shannon didn't have quite enough knowledge to be able to answer those questions, so that's why I was staying to try and train. So I, I mean, I'm more than, I wanna make sure everybody's up and running and comfortable before.
Yeah, no, I wanna make sure too, but I just, I know how much, I, I just wanna make sure this budget comes as paying you and paying them and all the things, and it, yeah.
Yeah.
We've had nobody really express any interest in the position, so.
But do you have interest in staying much longer?
I'm open. I mean, I, there's probably times that, you know, the quieter months or whatever, one person in the office, I mean, I was in the office, uh, I think for nine months or so before, uh, I think we hired Liz, because we just didn't have anybody. I mean, it's doable for somebody, but I just, I'm more than willing to be here, and I, I like the job. So, so the answer is, I guess, yes, I would be willing to, to consider, you know, staying on, and to your point, though, I, I try, maybe I'm trying to be optimistic on the twenty-seven assistant, that we find somebody, and that would be me just for a little bit of time.
So the ten is, you're thinking you.
Yes, it, once it.
Or, yes, so the forty, so forty-seven, seven is you and the assistant slash deputy, whoever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I don't like to overstate, but I probably shouldn't understate either. I, it, you know, we're talking here, here and a half, no, here and, so, I mean.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a little hard to project, just like last year, I said, and unfortunately, what I projected kinda came true, so that was, so I'm trying to be optimistic.
Okay, but, yeah, because the fiscal year twenty-five numbers, I don't remember what we approved for fiscal year twenty-five, but these numbers are obviously very high for, between deputy, assistant, but then the salary is really low, so I.
Yeah, and twenty-five, well, and twenty-five, it was kinda skewed, because, um, a lot of my salary got posted under deputy.
Okay.
I'm thinking this salary, oh, we did look at it, uh, this salary, twenty-five was you. Is that what we just said? I'm sorry, we, Denise and I had a discussion about this. Yes, so the fiscal year, that wasn't, when I came, that hadn't been budgeted, so I think that, although the budget, I don't know what this budget's actual was, do you happen to know that twenty-five? I think this is high, the actual is high, because.
That should be the actual.
This is the actual, yes, so I don't know what was budgeted for twenty, for twenty-five, but, um.
We were over it.
Yeah.
Considerably, because we had multiple town clerks and deputies.
Right, right. And, and, yes, and, and so, yeah, the fiscal year twenty-five was over, I think the twenty-six should probably be okay.
All right, because your twenty-six total between those three lines is seventy-nine five eighty-five. Nope, I did something wrong, hold on, I lost a zero, never mind, hold on.
Yeah, so. Let's go here.
You had me taking this, you know, and had it at seven hundred.
That's okay, hold on.
Between those three, maybe a hundred and thirty?
Like one forty-four.
A hundred and forty, yeah.
My please, I'm alone, I've done something wrong.
Yeah.
And that's partially this person who's no longer there, you, you, and maybe somebody in the future, if you can find someone in fiscal year twenty-six.
Yes, and because if we do find somebody, then the intent would be that I wouldn't be here the whole fiscal year twenty-seven.
Okay.
So Linda, you're, you're saying that you would be willing to be the deputy for all of fiscal year twenty-seven if we couldn't find you? I'm not holding you to that, I'm trying to make sure we have enough dollars budgeted.
Yeah.
And that happened is forty-seven.
We're trying to make sure the dollars work, I'm not asking you what you.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand what you're saying.
The dollars have gone down dramatically since the last two years, so I wanna make sure we have enough money.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking at, too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Fiscal year twenty-six is one forty-four, fiscal year twenty-seven is one twelve. However you slice that pie. Do you wanna think about it and get back to us?
Sure.
You might wanna look at the, the twenty-six.
No, I, yeah. Because the twenty-six is probably more accurate than the twenty-seven.
And that's a thirty thousand dollar difference.
Well, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good point, I'll get, can I get back?
Of course. Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions?
We have one minute.
I have a question.
Who filled this out?
Me?
Every single column?
No, the, um, I think you copied what I initially sent you on a budget to actual for the twenty-five column.
My concern is, in terms of formatting, if this is coming out of the accounting system, there's something wrong.
No, that's a, that's a spreadsheet that was converted from the accounting system, and then I think you guys converted it.
And then I, yes, what I did was I, I, um.
It's a third-generation conversion.
Third, third generation, because in terms of, the thing that gets me skittish, look at the bottom of February twenty-seven, it says one four one comma five zero 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 dot zero zero. That is really one point four million dollars. That is not correct.
What?
Why is it, why is it?
Look at the number.
What do you mean, it's one point four million?
Pretty much dollars, probably. There's two easy zeros.
Just the format?
Okay, you're not looking at the right one, because that's not what mine says.
This is the one that was sent out.
Did you get?
Yeah, I think there was a corrected one.
That's another one.
Yeah, there was a corrected one that was sent out, Scott.
Yeah.
No, I don't think you did, because that's not what I got.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I gave the spare one that I had to the audience.
That's okay, that's okay. This, I get concerned when we kick out things like this and the wrong numbers. I called you about the one that you put seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
Right, and I think I saw a formatting error on it, and Denise Freese sent that after.
I thought it printed that one out, but, okay, but before we kick these out, we need to check these a little bit better.
I mean, this is the only one that really had any difficulty because of the changes between multiple.
So why is she having to put in the numbers for twenty-five and twenty-six herself?
She is not, I formatted the spreadsheet, and the department heads copied portions of that spreadsheet, and then input their numbers to any budget.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm not sure, okay, because I, I even, I did this one down for me, so I can read it better, so, but it's from the same. Pardon?
Does anyone else have any questions? If not, then you'll get back to us.
I will.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, everything else pretty much, a little bit goes up every year.
The only thing I see going down here, sorry I'm gonna annoy you today, is the training. Are we expecting that to need to be a larger number if we're bringing in another new person?
Okay, so the conference and training.
The training line.
Yeah.
That went from six fifty to three fifty, is there?
Yeah. I did that budget, didn't I?
I don't know. Well, I just, I just assumed.
Yeah, no, um, what that includes, I'm not sure why I put the six fifty, because what that includes, the, um.
Maybe you moved it to treat conference and travel.
Well, I think, yes, there was, oh, here we go. So the conference. The conference inclu, uh, let's see, the training is two string workshops, um, one for the town clerk, one for tax collector, they're about ninety-five dollars per person, um, so I figured two people going.
Okay.
And then the other one was eighty dollars. And then for the conference line, that, that went up, because the town clerk's conference changed this year, and they actually, they had it up in Mount Washington, they charged four hundred dollars for the. $400 for the four days and you couldn't pick and choose like you used to be able to. And then, and then it's $199 per night at the hotel.
Great.
So that's why that went up. And I figured only one person would go to that because if, that's how they have it next year. Because in prior years, we've been able to go, it's been the North Conway and the meet, everything that they have is on a Thursday. The conference is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but we use, drive up when, Thursday morning and come back Thursday night because everything's in that. They changed that, so half of it at, in Mount Washington Hotel, part of it is on Wednesday and part of it is on Thursday, so that, what I call the, so you'd have to stay overnight one night.
Yeah, but if you, so I, let me rephrase my question. If we don't find another assistant deputy person until fiscal year 27, is there any additional training cost to get that person up to speed?
Not that we have to pay for.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Awesome.
The state, state does it for free.
Yeah, it's like, I like the rate.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you ladies.
Okay, thank you.
We'll hear from you on the salaries on the.
Yes, I will get back to you in a minute. Should I email everyone or?
Why don't you email me?
Okay.
Mr. Anderson of the Energy Commission.
Good luck.
Well, you've already got your.
Hi, my name's Don Anderson, I'm representing the Energy Commission and requesting a modest amount of funds for possible application. $250 for continued membership at our Clean Energy New Hampshire, which has been pretty valuable and gaining information for the commission. $250 to purchase tools for an energy kit that we keep trying to work with the library on purchasing. Primarily, it was for energy conservation for residents to, to borrow, but we have not found something yet that is sufficiently easy. In fact, I have one at home right now that I got to pull a panel off to try, so I don't think that's something we want our residents to do, but we're still looking. And $1,000 for an energy audit possibility on outdoor lighting. And just last week, a couple of our representatives went and found that they may be able to get an audit for free, which is always a wonderful thing. And that's what we'll attempt, but if we are not able to, we wanted to have a slight budget to be able to get a good audit. Because the energy costs just in electric on town buildings for the year is $30,000 and there is a breakout, which we presently don't have, for outdoor lighting. So we wanted to make sure that the lighting, the fixtures and other applications for it meet safety requirements as well as dark night requirements, as well as actually saving money. The whole goal of the Energy Commission is to save the town money and that's what our attempts are to do. Any questions?
Can you tell us what you did with the money that you have this year? What's the?
I don't know. I have to tell you that. I don't know, we, we don't cover any accounting in our commission meetings. I think last year we requested $500, if I remember correctly.
I think the only expenditure you've had to date is possibly paying dues in.
In the clean energy.
Right. I forget the exact acronym for it, but that was the only charge that I would call.
Okay, thanks.
I think last year was 500. You're looking for an extra thousand for the energy audit.
Only because we're not sure of the cost of that audit and we want to make sure it's a good investment on what we're going to get for the commission and for the town.
Any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Don.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time. Dean, there he is.
Which one are we doing first? Got to M tag first?
Whichever you'd like to do.
Happy to go in the order. I'm Dean Rubin, I'm the Chair of the Municipal Technology Advisory Committee. We're asking for $1,000 again this year. We asked for $1,000 our first year, which was the previous fiscal year FY25, and we spent $515 of that mostly on an owl, which we're exploring the use in meetings like this to improve the video.
Owl?
Yes, it's, it's basically a video camera.
That's okay. Want to make sure I.
Yes, it's, it's called a meeting owl. And they were very popular during the pandemic. Schools bought a whole bunch of them, but they're, they're getting, I got a used one, I got a good deal because they, they usually go for around $1,000 and I paid $350 for it, so if we don't want it, we can, we can probably make some money on it. Besides that, we generally operate without any money. We haven't spent any money this year. We don't really foresee spending any money. Mostly what we try to do is provide support to other committees that are trying to use the Microsoft space and we recently, I don't know how far it's gotten the process, but we got Andy a communication policy because we understood that our current social media policy is in the, is in Denise's desk drawer. Nobody knows what it is.
It's actually on the shelf, but the select board will see it at the next select.
Oh, that's great. I did, I, so really, we have no plans to spend this money. We probably will just give it back to you at, at the end of the year, but if something comes up, you'd like to have it. And Andy was a little put out that we didn't get clearance the last time for this last purchase, so we will certainly make sure to do that this time. Any questions?
One of the charges I thought was, I don't see it here, maybe I'm just missed it, but in terms of looking at the inventory of computer equipment that we have and projecting out in terms of what needs to be replaced when, so we can say.
You guys mentioned that and so we're, we talked about that with the committee, we're certainly willing to do it, but nobody's ever provided us with any, anything to get started on that, so we really haven't done anything.
Can we give him that list?
Yeah, between back day and myself, we have an inventory and an update scheduled.
Then this is going to be real easy.
So just, I think what I would be looking for is for you guys to look at, is there something that we need to change? Is it okay the way we're doing it? Just in terms of planning.
We would be happy to look at that. Chris, our other mainly active member is a computer security, cybersecurity professional and I have a PhD in computer science for what it's worth.
Then $6 will give you a copy of.
Yeah, exactly.
I would say that our plans for replacement diminished greatly when we changed financial software because the financial software that we had required a lot of server space, most of which we had used up. And the replacement financial software that we have does not require much server space at all and the storage is primarily on the provider, so we canceled the expensive items in our.
Awesome.
Replacement outlook for the most part.
It's always good news.
But your inventory covers all the departments, right?
It does. It, it has the primary equipment we have in the IT room at the town offices and it includes most of the desktop units except ones that have been scavenged from the transfer station, which are sprinkled throughout all departments in late.
So is everything off Windows 10?
We're on, yeah, we're well off Windows 10.
So we don't have no Windows 10?
Yeah, we've got, we actually had some Windows 7. We've been 10s up until last year that we have.
That's great.
If you guys have no questions for this one, I'll move on to the Sustainability. All right, I'm Dean Rubin, I'm the Chair of the Sustainability. I meant to bring your apples. The Sustainability Committee has been going for quite a while now. I think we got, we recently submitted a section to the master plan, but I think it's reviewed. You know, we exist with all these other committees that do a lot of sustainability work as well, especially the Energy Committee, so we try to find our niche, which is mostly things related to the transfer station and also various events such as the Made in Lee Artisan Fair, where we try to get Lee vendors to come out and sell things to, to locals. Again, we are very frugal with the funds. We didn't spend anything, I don't think, in FY25 and haven't spent anything to date and I put a little asterisk here, which is every year I go and I ask Karen Rossi for some printing and she hands me some printing back and I never actually see a bill for that, but I assume that's being accounted for somewhere. I'm happy to talk more, but I'm, I'll just leave it there and let you guys ask questions if you have any.
The MSW, it's up to 87?
Oh, that's, that's something to mention, right?
Yeah, so just in terms of when you're calculating, well, we're saving the town, whatever, that price is.
It's a, I, I put approximately 80.
Which is fine.
I've lost track at, at this point, but yeah, we're really, you know, proud of the town who's kind of supported the composting program as a small expense for the, well, since Toby left, so I think it's been about six or seven years now. And, and it's finally turning around and we're going to make some money by just basically putting, burying the food at the transfer station instead of, instead of paying to bring it to the landfill. And so now, now that that's happening, we're going to basically start a big effort to try to get people to compost or bring more food waste, separate their food waste and bring it to the station.
So we're not having it picked up anymore, we're doing it ourselves?
For, for, we used to have, Mr. Fox used to comment, it actually would cost more than MSW to discard, but now we are basically mixing it with the yard and waste and composting it on site and that's thanks to Steve and he has all the requisite permits from DES that he needs.
The other thing, can you update Dean, when you go back, you, despite you don't have it right here, but January 1st it goes up again.
Yes.
So that's.
It went up like a dollar. I mean, I, for a long time we had a contract that would go up about a dollar or two a year. And, well, I'd say, I mean, this number of eight, in the 80s has been, has been accurate for quite a while.
There's a new scheme that the state is using to capture revenue from out of state trash coming in that's going to involve some expenditure. We get our money back in the end. For lack of a better way to describe it, it's very similar to what was defined as Medicare scam a few years ago that New Hampshire got in trouble for. We can't charge out of state contractors coming in a separate amount than what we charge for in-state trash, but if we charge everybody a surcharge, then we can rebate the in-state people according to the basis. That's.
Whatever makes the state happy. You know, we, we do what we can to try to save the town some money basically by encouraging people to recycle and to dispose of their food waste separately, which saves us the landfill costs.
Is it your committee's job to tell people about the composting?
Now that there's no more solid waste committee, we sort of take, fronten that on, taking that for ourselves, yes.
It sounds like a good news story that we should talk about.
Yeah, I, I did write something for the ECRIR, I think it was at the beginning of the year, so it's probably time for an update. We'll do that.
Any questions for Dean?
Okay, I think we're all set. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Ellen, thank the members of the committee, Dean, for all that they do.
This one, right?
Which one?
Oh, we're.
You're early.
We got, got five minutes early. Do you like me to sing?
Do we know if Don's coming?
Yes, supposedly.
I, I didn't hear that she must.
She's supposed to be here until 7:50 anyway. One thing, if you would mind, it's my understanding this year, the committee is not going to present this year, right?
Correct.
That's correct. It's just you, basically.
It's just me.
You are the main, so why are you presenting?
So one of the things that we should do is look at the FTP, FPT, FPT, we'll get it wrong. So maybe we should kind of, I don't know, 30 minutes is not very long, especially for somebody who hasn't seen it yet. But I think we need to schedule some time to do that. And I think we need to go through it, at least the board needs to go through it and quantify what we're planning on doing and what we're not planning on doing, so that our department heads don't do a lot of work in terms of updating it when we have no intention of ever doing that particular thing, at least in the near future.
Was one of the things that was requested of the department heads that they update the financial planning tool for this year?
I don't think that started yet.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Tappan?
It won't start until the select board requests it.
Okay.
But I think the select board needs to sit down with it and go through and at least say, okay, this is something we're considering, this is not something we're considering in the future, and then update the department heads to see what they can do in terms of updating the numbers.
Okay. So far, those who have presented to us have no.
Right.
Acquisitions.
We just want to have it. Are we having a meeting? Oh, wait, I know that we said that Steve is moving from next week. Are we even having anything next week? Because.
Well, then we can do it next week.
We could do it next week because if Pete, Pete's not going to take more than, what, five minutes?
Five, maybe five.
Otherwise, I think we should move him too.
Actually, I have a call from him, but I don't.
My suggestion is going to be if you don't have something next week, move Pete with Steve because they're, the seven should go hand in hand with DBW for most of their expenses.
So we do that anyways and then maybe on October 7th, we do the FPT financial planning tool.
What is your plan? If it hasn't been updated, what do you want to?
I think at least the board needs to go through it and say, okay, this is something we're considering, this is not something we're considering, kind of, because right now there's some things in there that department has put in that are basically the wishes.
They're, excuse me?
They're wish lists.
Wishes.
So maybe.
Is that something you want to do at a joint meeting of these two committees?
I don't know. It's nice to have input from other people, but whatever the group wants to, I don't know what the other select board members want to.
No, I think having the, looking at it that way, when they come, we can say, and these things were on here, we need to.
So we haven't looked at that at all.
I am.
In a year.
Yep.
Why don't we move Steve, why don't we move Pete to the same 28 that we've moved Steve to?
Yep, and then plug FPT in for the.
I mean, the 21st, not the 28th, excuse me. And then we'll move the FTP to the 7th to next time.
Okay.
And I assume so much of our, you guys are assuming we're not having any internal budget discussion? After all of that.
That's really a filler, has been a filler because sometimes you get all those agencies, sometimes two show up, so.
Yeah, and then we talk after.
And then we talk after it, so. Any other thing is you've got a new member, Amanda, hasn't even seen the financial planning tool.
Maybe you could, maybe you could send out the current copy, remember, remind everybody.
Now, are we going to ask Mr. Tappan to leave us?
Is he going to be here?
Okay, if he, if he doesn't mind, if he can come and just walk us through, because he's got some enhancements.
There's enhancements.
Oh, there are.
How do you feel about that, Mr. Tappan?
You don't have to get up, but.
Next time.
I can, I have questions.
Do I? It's not really my meeting, but you know.
First question is, you're talking about reviewing this in one week. Are you expecting that the department heads will have made any changes or, because that's not.
I think it's more a refresh that we're ready to ask them about it when they come.
Okay, so for next week, it would be, I've already started this process, but rolling over to the new year. but rolling over to the new year, take what we know was spent into those figures, things that were planned for this current year, excuse me, were planned for, expected to be done last year, but we're not, we're just, I'll just push things forward so they don't fall off. And then you'll then see what it is, the numbers add up to and.
Thank you.
Because it's gonna be more than what we can afford. So I think it's appropriate for us to go through and kind of cull what there thinks that are kind of sketchy with the information we got at the last night's meeting in terms of the revenue being down at least $100,000, things are gonna be very tight, so. I don't think we can afford everything that the financial planning tool is calling. I don't wanna necessarily have the department heads go back and do stuff on items that we know we're not gonna do, that would be a waste of time.
The appropriations that were put in this year were less than what it was recommending in almost all cases. And since it just does the arithmetic, it then says, okay, so it's like a card that says, recalculating, recalibration, not a problem, so it calculates, you gotta put in more next year. So you'll just see that. The only thing that has changed is, that is good news, is that the extremely expensive piece of fire apparatus is not as expensive as it was planning for.
That's true.
Thank you for the demo.
You guys probably used one, right?
We found a demo, motto, so it's coming in at 800.
27,000.
And $1. Thanks.
$1.
That was the final.
Is that working out? That's workable for you, John?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't.
So if you'll walk us through that, Mr. Tappin, that would be great.
Apologies for the short notice.
And with the idea that Amanda hasn't seen it, so kind of like a little overview.
Yeah, that will be on the screen, so you'll all be turned around so that she can watch it. And it is ideally set up for a screen that is like twice as big as that. That's what I look at, so we will be struggling to see all of it on that small screen.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ed, you can put a sheet up, right?
Or you can make it really small, you can buy all this little magnifying glasses that you look at, so.
Get the 12-pack at Walmart.
So if you can get, was Denise able to put this up on the website?
She did not because I suspected we were gonna make changes, so I asked her to.
She can tweet that.
And she can delete me off the, the CIP can be deleted off the forum.
There is a picture of it on the website.
On the, she didn't put it on the official agenda like she usually does.
Does that projector downstairs project larger?
Yeah, it is not as, this is an HD projector, the one downstairs is not.
This one is 4K.
Yes.
The screen is not.
The issue is simply that when I am working on the spreadsheet, I'm looking at a 32-inch 4K monitor and it's this far away from me. So that screen there is about three times as big, so you should sit just six feet away. All of you, obviously can't do that.
Right.
Stare people across the.
So you have to.
Just go on the other side.
You have to, you know, make the font larger and so not as much fits on.
Yeah, I just know if that one downstairs was.
It's a lower resolution, significantly lower resolution.
It's much lower resolution projector, but I don't believe the screen is.
It's a little bit bigger. I think it's about eight feet instead of seven.
So no, not useful.
The other thing, can you give us the monthly's for FY26? I haven't seen one lately.
Yep, that's only kept.
For revenue and if you can send it to everybody.
I can.
They should see it too.
I sent the final closeouts to the department heads today and asked them to review it, make sure everything looked in accordance with their understanding and I'll send that to you before the end of the week as well. I can send that to the entire committee. I will also take, basically, particularly for the smaller budgets, I send the spreadsheet information to the department heads and they, for the most part, put together their own budget presentation for you and sometimes change it, change the format, that type of thing. As soon as I get some of the larger budgets, which I don't have at this point other than my own, I will put those into the actual accounting software and get you hard copies of that, which will have very firm last year's final, this year's budget and the requests.
And can you also give us the non-revolving accounts? Conservation Commission, Heritage Commission, Ag Commission, there's another one, what's the other one? There's another one.
Heritage, Ag, Conservation.
There's, whatever the other one.
I have them all broken up into.
Recreation, is it Rec?
Rec. Recreation is actually an expendable trust fund, I believe, revolving, but I can give you those.
Just so that when those particular people come in and we're talking about, you know, like for instance, the Heritage Commission, Heritage Commission has almost $28,000. They will not be making a presentation because they're not asking for any money. But the other ones, you know, Ag usually asks for something, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But it's good to know what they've got in their kiddy's. Because I'm not in favor of giving them more money when they haven't spent whatever.
They're out on the list, so I'm assuming they didn't answer it. Can we go over the list one more time to make sure we've got all the changes? What is happening in the 250th again?
The 250th could come to the regular meeting because they didn't have enough members at the last scheduled meeting to have a regular meeting to decide on what they're asking for. So they're meeting again on the 9th.
Okay, so we don't have a place to slot them yet?
Yeah, they're there, she moved them. They're on the 28th at 8:30 to 8:40.
Okay, then this one, they're not on.
Oh, so you don't have enough data.
She don't. This is the latest one I had from, she's on the.
I think that with you.
I don't have the updated one either.
So the 250th moved to the.
28th.
Compromises.
Thank you.
I'm just picking.
You can pick on the end. Okay, so they're on the 28th, so next time we're having, John's gonna talk about the FTT.
That's it.
The 21st, we have the ones that are listed here. Plus cemetery, plus public works. And then the rest of it should be, and we're gonna take me off, take the CIP off the 11th board. I think everything else is.
The other thing, just be aware of, hopefully we can do it in two meetings, but we might need another meeting for us to do an internal discussion, maybe. It's tight, it was tight last year. Just a thought.
We.
Yes, we did, so, I don't know.
Question?
Okay, so I've wasted enough time, it's time for her to come, so.
I know.
I think she was at 50, right? It's also like two minutes.
So Pete and Steve are moving to the 21st?
Now that I have the new one.
We're changing again.
I'll send you to a talk.
Okay, sure, there you go, he'll send you a new one.
Thank you. And financial planning tool is on the 7th. And this gets crossed out. And CIP.
Yep.
Doesn't make much difference, she's just gonna show up anyways, right? Me?
Yeah.
Whoever's here. I just like to be on the phone a lot. And even tonight, I was like, oh, where are all these people, you know? Look, the leak creators didn't come and poosh. Well, they're next time, the 21st. Well, they were. Since we don't have anybody else at the moment, can we talk about the CIP committee? Because right now it's just Pat.
So you're gonna talk about it, she's right here.
Yeah, yeah. Pat knows, Pat knows what I'm talking about. She's the last one. So really, there's no committee, so we need more people to participate.
Well, the real issue is, do you, that we have to, you have to decide what the committee's gonna do because a lot of what the former CIP did has been incorporated into the financial planning tool. So whether or not that was the right thing that that committee should have been doing or not is a moot point, but.
Well, according to the RSA, they're supposed to be looking at larger things in terms of planning for, you know, buildings and stuff like that and doing an analysis in terms of stuff, so, but it's hard to do with one person.
Well, I know, but there still is not, what you just said is fine, except that that needs to be fleshed out more from where the select one, because a committee can't sit around and decide we're gonna build a new, whatever.
I understand, I understand.
It's hard to try and find people to be on a committee that doesn't have a charter or at least a description of what it's supposed to be doing. I would go to throw that back to the board of selectmen and say, you need to.
Because you do have a charge. There is a charge.
There is a charge, but it's not specific enough to help because if you, you can say, well, we are, the committee should be doing long-range planning about long-range projects. Well, that's great, but do you want us to link them up or do you have, does the town have some needs we're trying to address? So it's also hard to do planning when we have projects that are already on the books that we can't afford.
But the financial planning tool is just a tool you should be running. Mr. Tappin does that out of the goodness of his heart. It's not a committee, the financial planning tool.
That's true, but is that something?
It's normally the, you know, the CIP would be the person or the group that would normally do it.
John, would you like to join us in this discussion? Thank you, I didn't say nothing.
The CIP committee by statute has the authority to request all department heads to come to them and tell the CIP committee what they plan for projects for at least the next six years. You don't have to get the select board to tell the department head. The CIP committee has the authority by statute to do that.
Which is, I would imagine, and I'm making this part up, but I would imagine that most of the committee, that most of the department heads think that when they give you the information update the financial planning tool, that they're accomplishing what you just said.
There are projects that should be considered, such as an office building, which is not up to a department head to decide that it should be done or what's needed, things like that. Also, you have the authority to request information from the select board. Things like office building is something the select board should be saying, yes, we need, it needs to be, it needs to fulfill these needs, which is, you know, duplicate at least what you have right now. And the information, the important function of the CIP committee is to then, with those inputs, decide what the priorities should be, where the funding should come from, et cetera. There's some other things that you can do.
I think we actually, the first year, we had some beginnings of this because we talked about the office building and the bond issue, but it was, largely, we we kept bumping into the fact that it seemed like we were duplicating what was in the financial planning tool. So.
It was also my understanding that Dave Cedarholm kind of got shut down.
That would be a pretty good description of it.
So, yeah, so, but yeah, we can, I think we can talk about it. But I think, I think you know what we've been thinking in terms of, you know, we're looking for replacement in the office building, we're looking for a renovation of the town hall. At some point, we gotta do those particular things. And other than that, there's some things that the highway department that he's been looking to do. But I guess we're looking, I would be looking for you guys, or just you, right at the moment, to look and do an analysis in those particular things, you know, where can funding come from? When is it, you know, feasible to do this? And it's some of those things that are on the financial planning tool are buildings.
I know, that's what, because the financial planning tool has renovation of town hall in it. And I believe it has an office building, doesn't it?
Yep, it does. I think they're axed, but they're.
They're axed, but they are there. I certainly can, can, we can certainly discuss those items. It's other projects that are kind of pie-in-the-sky things.
Well, I think if we were to go through those and say, okay, this is, these are the things that we think that we need to accomplish in the near future, whatever the.
And there's some things we've kicked down the road for a long time now, like a salt ship, a new salt ship for.
Yeah, that's one. Scales, scales at the transfer station, I think is one of those.
It was quite a few.
Tennis court, did that ever get out there? A what?
Tennis court.
I think it's still there, but.
I believe it's still there, but I don't think I've mentioned any intention of ever.
Not the money. So that's the other thing, what happens to that money that all these things are? Then do you?
Depends on if there's actual money designated to or if it's an idea that we'd like to be able to use money for.
Right. Like the tennis court, for example, there was like 44,000 or something, or whatever. I can't remember exactly, but.
I think it depends on what account it's in, well, that money means.
Whether you can switch it to something else or whether you need to use it just for that.
Do we have an updated trust fund?
Well, that's the other thing we need.
Yes, we, John, can you bring a updated trust fund bill or?
Send it to us electronic, if that would be great.
Yes.
Because you haven't filed the MS 9 and 10 yet, right?
Oh, yeah, that was done.
Oh, you did that?
Yes.
Can you send us those?
So I do need to send it to you. Probably what's most useful for the advisory budget committee is this report, which I print each month. There is one at town office, but it shows what is principal and what is income and what the changes are each month. But this is a summary where it just shows you what the total in the fund is, but it's more useful because it also shows you what abbreviation name we use, what's the full name of the fund, what's the purpose of the fund, what kind of fund is it, who are the agents, if there are agents, for that fund? And then what is the ending balance for, in this case, it's month two of the fiscal year, so it's ending balance of August. So if I was really quick, this would be updated tomorrow afternoon. It probably will be tomorrow afternoon, but.
That's okay.
Every month I have online access for inquiry only for all of our deposit accounts. And then.
Yeah, that would be great. Because that is gonna be needed because in terms of looking at what we want to accomplish and how much money is available, that will give us an update.
All these numbers are in the FPT along with what interest is expected to be earned.
Which is going down.
From a time horizon perspective, isn't the office building moving larger and larger?
Well, we're getting to the end of the lease.
We're, I mean, fourth year of a six-year lease. A couple of things that I would mention, when I had talked to Jim last year, he was not adverse to extending the lease. There's also some, as a result of estate planning, that sort of thing, all of the parcels in the park that the town office building is in are being separated into single units and there is possibility that the present town office building couldn't purchase. Actually, Karen Rossi and I had both spoken with a real estate appraiser that was working with the owner and the figure that they were floating around was a fairly reasonable number, so that might be an option as well.
Yep.
Good evening. Sorry I'm late, I lost track.
John is here to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission.
I do have a spare copy, I'm sorry, I gave it to the audience.
Well, I realized I was gonna be late and I ran out without even grabbing my own folder. Depending on, maybe six, do you want to look at how these? As you can see, and if you have anything from last year or previous year's requests, I kept everything in the same format and we're approximately at the same number that we've been at for the last couple of years. Most of our work falls in these four categories. And the biggest items end up being the work that we do on town on land. And you know, the work we've done. And you know the work we've done with our Trails Subcommittee. And the thirty-one hundred dollars is actually from their detailed list over projects that they have that are in the works, getting designed and, and thought about. We have management of invasive species on several properties that is some of that cost with ecological management. Stewardship costs can be, sometimes it's checking on boundaries. We, on a private easement, we recently had a, a corner pin we couldn't find for several years and ended up having to contract with the original surveyor to go out there, and that was six hundred and fifty bucks just to find one pin. So that cost can kind of go up. But that's the reason for having these, these things in there so that we can make sure that people are aware of where the boundaries are, and more importantly, the neighbors. Another easement example was somebody paved a driveway and went a little too far. So it's constantly reminding neighbors where the boundaries are on some of those things. So both on private, so that's why we have costs on private lands too, because the easement holder, it's our responsibility to monitor those and make sure that they stay up to snuff. We have the potential for a very big project coming up in the next year, two, depending on how the timing goes for that. So we're very excited about that because it's been a while. And that would be a, a private easement that might happen. And then the rest is just things that we do. We support, we, we do three hundred dollars memberships to New Hampshire Association and Conservation Commissions, who is very valuable resource because, you know, as laypeople and especially when you're new, the guidebook and the information and the training sessions that they have are extremely important for our members to keep up to date with how things are done and what other towns are doing. And the annual conference beginning in November is often an important place to go and learn new things. So that's our basic request, much in line with what we've requested before. And I also like to always show you, you know, our estimate of the hours that we put in. And every year, this website that I mentioned here updates what the cost state by state is of the value of a volunteer hour. So we think we're giving you pretty good, pretty good service at sixty-five thousand dollars of free time.
This is more for the Select Board members, but when you see the budget's actual for year-end, you will notice that the Conservation Commission is wildly overspent and that it's not because they overspent their budget line, it's because I had to run the thirteen thousand five hundred dollar grant through the expenditure lines.
Yeah, because it was a project that was, that's a project about managing town, the, the old mill reserve, town-owned land, and it was a hundred percent cost share with Natural Resource Conservation Service. So we had to spend it and then get reimbursed for it, so it was money out and money back.
So you'll see the corresponding side on the revenue side.
You will.
Can you tell us, because I don't know the number, I may have, maybe you do, how many properties do you monitor? Because one of the things, look, I, I attend their meetings. And the thing that always strikes me is these people do an awful lot of work, and especially in terms of monitoring easements, they spend an awful lot of time doing that, and they do a very nice job, so.
Yeah, well, we're, we're grateful that currently Mark Nelson is the lead on that. And we started in February, actually, was trying to do the Barret property when it was frozen because so much of it is wet. And we picked, we've been monkeying with the schedule because some are boggy and some are buggy and some are brambly. We keep trying to be smarter about when we, we do these things. We're actually looking into maybe doing a one or two really particularly tough ones by drone. We had a gentleman come to our meeting last month, he asked permission to fly over Lee Five Corners just for fun. And it's incredible what he can pick up. And we may, we may actually contract with him, we're gonna talk, he did, he gave us, he gave us a, a flash drive of, of all the photos that he took with that drone, just on that property. And, you know, it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing, but. So a couple really tricky ones, like, like Barret, that might lend itself, Lee Foch, trying to do that one with a drone. So, because if it doesn't freeze.
Actually, Karen, I don't even remember, but Mark told it to me today because he wanted to know if I could run the thank you and go up through the post to trade. For how a property that you mind.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's, it's about thirty that are private. And we're doing at least seven that are town-owned that have easements on. Not that that's all the town properties, just the ones that have a conservation easement, so. Yeah, so we started in February, March, and because we started so early, we actually finished here just last week every Wednesday morning, and there's been generally at least three people going out on those. By law, we're supposed to monitor them every year. Not all towns do that, but we always have and we keep it up. Anything else?
I have a couple of questions, well, one was a comment, which is the, the trail maintenance stuff is wonderful. I just, do you have any idea how much the usage of the trails has gone up now that you've been doing the work?
We don't have any data, no, I mean, it would take.
Does it feel like there's a lot more usage?
Well, it all started with the pandemic, that was when it was the big jump, when everybody was home.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it started with then. And I don't think it's tapered off necessarily, but people definitely got out and used the trails a lot. We tried once with a, a trail counter. That, that was about bikes, because we were, and, and some towns, we, we haven't come to any conclusions, but some other towns wrestling with this too. And especially now that there's even e-bike. So it's like, eh, you know, if, if it doesn't say prohibited in the easement, then you're stuck with following the terms of the easement, but, you know, so, and then there's pros and cons to all of that, but. So we did try, someone had put out a, the counter that cars run over, so, but we don't have good data.
Have you seen much damage from the e-bikes?
It's not, it's actually, no, there's not, I don't think we're saying that there's an overuse. It actually had more to do with collision potential.
Yes.
Someone coming around the corner and then somebody's walking and, yeah. So the people who are the walkers weren't exactly in favor, so.
My other question relates to the potential easement acquisition. Do you, do you folks have enough money to do it if, if it?
I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know anything about the monetary requests. The Southeast Land Trust is coming to our meeting in October, and they're coming prepared to talk about what the plan is. But they're the ones that are currently managing, putting together a proposal. I'm assuming that they would ask for some portion of what it would take from the town, as well as whatever Southeast Land Trust might raise, what might be landowner discounted. There's any number of ways that that number could come up, and right now, we, we have no idea what, what the thinking is.
We do have money in the trust fund.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, and, and I let Southeast Land Trust know that the timing's important because to spend it, we have to have a warrant article. And so that would have to be drafted in November. So if there's an expectation of anything happening after July one of next year, then we need the warrant article to, to ask for money out of that trust fund.
And both of them have no agents to expand, right, Mr. Tappin?
Correct.
And can you give on what the totals are? Is this two of them?
Yes. I, I just rounded off.
Okay.
Land acquisition is two hundred and eighty-one thousand and land use change, almost four hundred and thirty-two thousand.
So six hundred and something.
Over seven hundred.
It's over seven hundred. Yep. Like I said, I have no clue what, what numbers we might be looking at.
Any other questions?
My small child would like to know when the trolls are coming back.
All right, well, let's see, tomorrow night, the Trails Committee meets, I'll have to pass that on to the ones that we're working on. So you want the trolls to come back?
She would like the trolls to return.
Yeah. I will mention, we recently had a little bit, we're working on a little bit of a conversation with the, the Rec Commission to see if we can team up with the Rec Commission to have a trail that's a fitness trail. Although the Trails Committee says we don't want to build any apparatus, but they'd be happy to help lay one out, so.
Something like Maggery has it to it.
Something like, yeah, well, we're looking, we're gonna start looking into it, but I just wanted to add it, because I remember years ago when I was on the Rec Commission, like, we're talking fifteen or so. There had been a survey and a senior said, we'd like a place to, to walk, but we want to make sure that people could see us if we go down. Something's not, not too straight, yeah, exactly, so it's like, so a little where the park maybe might make a great place to be able to have a perimeter loop that, you know, includes a little bit of strengthening and exercise.
I went to a meeting where the Concord Parks and Rec Director was explaining how their trails and ales night works, and they got together with the Conservation Commission and the Recreation Commission, and I think it's on Thursday nights throughout the summer, how a hike that ends with an ale sampling, you know.
Oh.
Oh, an ale. I thought it was ale that's.
Trails ales. ALES.
Initiated, what's the story with the trolls?
They, they hid the trolls underneath the bridges on one of the trails, and you went out and you had to find them and take a picture of yourself with each troll. I have picture, photo evidence. And then directly you went to the library and got a sticker. She didn't actually care about the sticker, she just liked finding the trolls under the bridge, because we'd stop on the bridge and then in the troll hole, I mean, I'm sure you can imagine.
Well, I'll pass the word on.
It sounds fun.
Yeah, it was actually fun, we had a great time, she absolutely loved it.
She'll have to fight Tom for it.
Well, it's funny because she wanted to do it again, I'm like, well, they're not there anymore, sweetie, like, it was a whole conversation that happened.
The, they, Trails Committee's also participated in the, the scarecrow contest behind the library, Halloween time too, so.
One more thing before you head off, because you're a hard person to get a hold of. This particular person that sits in front of you is the recipient of the Volunteer Year Award for two thousand twenty-four. She avoided us, we couldn't even get her husband to get her to a place. So it was presented to her at the last Conservation Commission meeting, so congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Select Board, after the Select Board meeting. There's never anything that was ever on my radar whatsoever, so I was rather surprised, but thank you.
Just a little bit, just a little bit. But thank you very much for all of your.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Five thousand dollars.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Is there anything else for the ABC tonight?
Now I will turn it back over to the Select Board.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, so move.
All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Entertain.
Really good one, though.
Yeah, it's really, it's dancing.